All the halls. I call the Halsey City Council meeting of July eleventh, twenty twenty-three to order at seven P M. Hillary, will you please call roll?
Mayor LaRippe. Council President Eisen.
Here.
Counselor Lacoste.
Here.
Counselor Lorenson.
Here.
Counselor Romer. Counselor Strax.
Here.
Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. United Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You to everybody who took the time to be here tonight. Uh, any guests who are physically present need to sign in at the little table over here, meeting sheet. Uh, we're running a hybrid meeting tonight to continue to allow those who want to attend remotely to do so. Uh, to cut down on background noise and feedback, remote attendees should mute themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give council reports. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during the public hearings and during citizen comments. First item on the agenda is council minutes. Any questions?
Work session minutes first.
Work session minutes, yes. Any questions or a minute? For the minutes. None, I would entertain a motion.
Move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the May twenty-three work session minutes. And uh, June thirteenth city council minutes.
Second.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the financial reports for June twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions or discussion? Oh, hearing the minutes, I would entertain a motion.
Move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the June twenty twenty-three financial report and journal entries as submitted.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the agenda adjustments. Hillary.
Well, Sergeant Bramby's. Sergeant Bramby's contacted me and he is held up at another meeting, so he's gonna be arriving late tonight, so we'll just wait until he shows up. If you want, we can move the council application up near the top of the menu, you might be a little less lonely spinning the table.
I think that would be a good idea. Yeah.
So let's move that up on the delegations.
Okay.
I didn't write your agenda that way, but that means that's next.
Okay. Delocation. Next item on the agenda delegation. And we have a council application. From Gabriel Flores. Finally got there. Gabriel, do you have anything you wanna? Tell us, introduce yourself.
I do, I need to stand before you.
You can just stand where you are.
Uh, well, we will, um, for the past maybe six months, I've been working with Stacy and Hillary on the Parks Committee. Um, now the Library Parks Committee, uh, and so I'm continuing to work with that. Uh, beyond that, I work with the USDA, uh, I have previous experience in automotive and forklift repair. Um, and also play previous experience in restaurants, um. And I'm a graduate of U of O from twenty twenty, and I've been living at Halsey for two years.
Okay.
Since September twenty twenty-one. August twenty-two.
Alright.
It was nice to meet you.
Thanks for you, thank you. Have any questions or any?
Yeah, it is, um, a little further down, it's under old business, it's after.
Does anybody else have any questions? Gabriel?
I'm happy to see somebody that wants to serve.
Definitely appreciate that. So, any other discussions?
No, I've been working with Gabriel for a few months, like you said, I was excited to see his application, it's been very helpful in the Parks Committee, and he has definitely shown excitement about Halsey and the parks, and he's even been wanting to help with like grant writing and um, always has a lot to add that's helpful, so I was very excited to see his application.
Awesome. Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion.
Move that the governing body and the city of Halsey prove is Gabriel. The, the position of city council to serve the remainder of the current term.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Alright, motion carries, welcome.
We're gonna throw you in, so we got one more person.
Yeah, we're a little light. That's why we bumped you up to this. We're feeling a little lonely up there.
Um, please raise your hand. I state your name.
Gabriel Flores.
A duly elected councillor of the city of Halsey.
Duly elected councillor of the city of Halsey.
To hereby solemnly swear that I will support.
To hereby solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
The Charter and ordinance of the city of Halsey.
That I will faithfully perform my duties.
That I will faithfully perform my duties.
As councillor for the city of Halsey.
As councillor for the city of Halsey.
For the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sir. Uh, you wanna take the seat right now? Seat.
Sure.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
We try to be fairly really get over the one. So we'll wait on the sheriff's office, so we'll go into citizen comments. Uh, this is the time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any items of concern. Please limit your comments to about three minutes. And start by introducing yourself and state your address. Anyone? Alright. Next, we want to move to reports to council. Uh, the first one would be Hillary. Can you give us your report?
Sure. Um. I need to know what date council would like for its goal setting, um, that's coming up this fall. For those of you who haven't done it yet, it's a lot of fun, but it is a Saturday. Um, roughly half of one, and we feature breakfast and lunch and get to brainstorm all the wonderful things we're gonna accomplish in the coming years. Um. The dates that the planner has available are on the report, the fourteenth, the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth, and November fourth. And I'll have to circle around the members of council who aren't here, which I, for those of you who aren't, are there those, are there dates there that work or don't work?
I don't have anything on my calendar in the month of October, so.
No, the only thing I would say would be more difficult for me is the twenty-eighth, just because that's the Saturday before Halloween. And since I have little kids, I'm sure there's something that I'm gonna be dragged to. Just work on my lives.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
The fourteenth would work best since I'm having a baby.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. She does, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Oh, never mind, that's perfectly fine, I have a prior engagement order November fourth.
On November fourth, okay.
So, yeah.
I'm at this point open.
Have you been to one, Stacy?
No, no. It was done right before I got.
They are a lot of fun and very informative. It's.
It can be exciting.
It is, actually.
Cover the walls down there with all kinds of ideas.
Yeah, it's kinda cool how he does it and stages and stuff, and fun to be able to bring it up, so anyways, sorry, go ahead, Hillary.
Um, the current payment drop box has been resting for years, we keep sending it down and repeating it. It was actually custom built for the city, I think from Salem, the penitentiary in Salem. Um, it has some design, um, interesting features, one of them is that the lip is flat, so sometimes if people don't put their stuff in all the way, it sits on that lip and then in theory, somebody could remove it, it's never happened, but we have occasionally found one on the on the, um, asphalt. And so, we're looking at replacements, um, and my ideal replacement would actually sort of lose an amenity, which is this ability to drive up and put something in there. Because what I'd like is a box that's actually designed to accept payments, like you would see at a uh, apartment complex or something, they're generally mounted to the side of the building, they're very secure, once it goes down in, it's in, nobody can touch it. I would probably do it by the front door, because sometimes people come when we're closed, and then the payment drop box is right there, they don't have to go around the building to it. Um, it also could be sheltered under that overhang, which would protect it from weather, which would make it last longer. But it does mean that people wouldn't be able to drive up to it and, or drive, you know, pull it into the parking space, so I wanted to run it with council, um, and see how you felt about that.
I will say also with our current box, it, if they don't really shoot it in there, it will fit on that, sit on that lip, and if it's raining, the check always gets soaked, and we just set it on the vent to dry the checkout before we even pop it, because it's wet. So.
The wind can also take it, because one of my husband dropped it off our very first payment when we moved.
I chased checks through that parking lot, um, when I opened the drop box door and it creates like a cyclone in there, and then checks fly out and I have to run around with the parking lot stepping on them and trying to grab them, it's great.
I was gonna say, has anybody got a video of this?
Especially being pregnant.
The other thing that happens is, it's, there's no way to make it not moist, it's, it's humid and it's out there exposed, and so the, if people haven't sealed their checks, the glue strip gets wet and it sticks to the check, and then you've gotta be very careful getting it off so you don't destroy the checks.
Yeah.
I just like a more covered location.
I don't have a problem with that, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you lose the drive.
Something mounted on the building or something, a penetration in the building.
I'm looking at something mounted on the building at law, rather than something that passes through the wall, partly because the downstairs walls are mostly masonry. Um, and I like to keep it at a good height for ADA and partly just, I mean, I'd really like to not cut holes in the building.
Yeah, I was a little concerned about cutting through.
Plus, then you've gotta secure both ends, right, and if it's just secure, it's simple.
Okay.
Either, is that something our guys can do, Public Works can do, or do you have to have somebody come in?
No, that's another reason, you don't have to cut through the wall, so yeah, no, we just buy it and install it.
Okay. I don't have a problem.
No, as long as it's gonna be as secure, we don't have to worry about, you know, an easy pry bar or something if something's going on.
They haven't put a sign out there that'll hold up to the weather to tell people it's in the front.
Yeah, I know.
Because they're gonna go to where they've been going.
And you lose the drive-up option, but you also, it's
Which I've used like once.
I was gonna say, I have used it, but in my car.
And I'm not sure exactly what the hardware is, I do know that, um, that a lot of, um, property managers use these in very exposed circumstance, and they have probably higher risk than we do, so I think there's hardware that makes it so you can't just stick a pry bar in there all the way.
That's just why I was asking, our apartment and Eugene have them like three times, really, for people to just like stick a crowbar in, if they prop it and you can reach your hand in the slot.
Okay, we will, we will do our due diligence.
Because we had our apartment building, we had to pay by check, so everyone knew it like the fifth of the month, there was like seventy-five checks in a box out there, so it happened a few times.
Used to have one for our rentals too, and um, for Alice. And we had to make it where no cash in it.
Yeah. Well, and this one is no cash, sometimes people ignore that, but it is no cash. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure and do our due diligence and find out what we need to learn about security.
Well, and also if we're going to the online portal, people can pay there or whatever, then.
It does open up a lot of payment options, it will probably ultimately reduce the number of checks.
Yeah.
Also, right now, there's a, a processing fee for using a card, and that will change when we go to the online portal.
Okay.
So that will be an additional benefit for citizens.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, okay. Uh, the mayor, Maddie, and I interviewed four possible rare candidates and submitted our ranked responses, we don't yet know who will be assigned. Um. Wildish, I don't know if you've been over here, this is, um, on West H and West First, so right near the railroad crossing, right near the library, they were out there with, um, equipment on a very hot day, and the equipment left tracks in our asphalt, kind of messed up the road. Um, I've talked to ODOT and to Wildish, they've pledged that it will be repaired before they leave, so. Um. The small municipalities advocacy coalition, we're gonna start trainings, um, and the first four will be on Thursdays. Michelle, I fought this so hard, I'm sorry. Um, on August twenty-fourth, thirty-first, September seventh, and September fourteen. Um, so. The, my ask for councils to think about if you can attend one of those and when, uh, we actually are deliberately not making them specific to just a location, like just a Halsey one and just Brownsville one, because we want you to have the internet, the opportunity to interact with other elected officials and have conversations with them and make connections with them, because that's sort of what this is about, is we can work on each other's issues and help each other. Um, and increase our impact that way, so. Um, please look at those and see if there's a date you can attend, and I'm hoping that we'll add some additional trainings in the future that are not on Thursdays.
And we just need to attend one of those, or?
Yeah, and then, yeah, just one, and it's the groundwork for the, the sort of grassroots advocacy, um. We had a kind of a kickoff meeting with the lobbyist who's gonna teach us stuff, and he's really great and he's really knowledgeable, so um, hopefully he'll give us some good tools, and yeah, but just choose one.
When do you need to know which one we can attend by?
Um, that's a really good question.
I mean, yeah, did we have to sign up or just?
Well, they kind of want an RSVP, because I, I, they kind of want an RSVP, so they know that like if there's a one that only one person's attending, we'll try to help them get on a different one, so they're not, they're all bad. So, yeah, um, I think that probably like two weeks ahead of time, they didn't give me a deadline, but you've got some time.
Okay.
Um, and I, it's also, this is a partnership, right, so if you sign up for the, the twenty-fourth, and then something happens and you wanna show up on the thirty-first, nobody's gonna shut the door at your face, they're just trying to get a rough count.
Yeah.
Of, you know, who's gonna be there. Um. The infrastructure funding app update, I actually get to add to this, so the three hundred thousand dollar direct capital funding request for Halsey's well made it into SB five-five-oh-six. It hasn't been signed yet, or it hadn't as of when I looked at it this morning, or if it was, it wasn't updated to the site yet. Uh, but I had a meeting with DEQ today, so those loan agreements, we won't see them until after September fifteenth, because they're getting more funding in and they want to give us loan forgiveness. But unofficially, it sounds like we'll give one hundred percent loan forgiveness on the planning loan. Which is a free wastewater facilities plan for us, we have, technically, we have to take out a loan, so we might take out a ten dollar loan or something like that, but it, so essentially, it's a grant, and then I was worried that then they weren't gonna give us any on the construction project for the INI, but they're gonna give us fifty percent loan forgiveness on, well, potentially unofficially, and on the documents, yeah, they anticipate being able to give us fifty percent loan forgiveness on that one as well.
Awesome.
So, um, I'm pretty excited about that, and so are they. And then Eric Votow, the new owner of the company that was RTI, it's now Barcom. Um, he participated in the Citywide Garage Sale, um, raised about thirteen hundred dollars, and he intends to donate the proceeds to the Halsey Library. So.
Very cool.
Wanted to acknowledge that in public and thank him.
Yeah.
And then I forwarded this to anybody who's getting the council updates, but ODOT and Union Pacific have finally come to an agreement. And so they're gonna be able to fix the railroad crossing at the same time as they're doing the rest of the project.
Thank you. Yeah. Alright. Thank you, Hillary. Uh, next on the agenda is the Public Works Report. Are you with us?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Well, here's my report for June, uh, in the water department, uh, we've been chasing a water leak on the east side of Diamond K, our water main runs alongside that road. Uh, going towards City Hall, um. So, with the help of, uh, City of Albany, Wildish and Accurate Leak Detection, they have a, they have a, sorry, uh, contributed in the efforts, um, but we haven't had any luck trying to find that leak. Uh, but we had two other leaks that we had good luck on, uh, Royal Turn. Uh, at Royal Turn. Uh, there was a service there, and at the shop, there was a service there, we were able to repair. Uh, we had an issue with the water treatment jockey pump. And there's a long story with that, and I won't, uh, go into details, but we swapped, uh, uh, a third, another thirty horse pump uh, that's on the shelf, and everything went away, and it's working just fine. Um, until today, and that's till next month's report.
To be continued.
And exactly. Along with that, um, we cleaned and rebuilt the chlorine pump. Um. In the sewer department, the radiators for the lift station and the lagoon were pulled and taken in for cleaning. The, uh, lift station has been installed. The other one, they was ten days out, it was leaking internally. Um, so we're expecting that at any time and have that, uh, back online. Um. We excavated some areas around town, these are all areas, well, the area on D Street, these were two areas that the road is failing and really close to being able to have, you know, potholes and whatnot. So, we excavated and prepped those areas for Blackstone to come in and do a bunch of patching that we had around town. And what did I say here, I think, uh, six areas that they came through town and, uh, and patched those areas for us. Um. There was a section of sidewalk on East First, sorry, West First. Um. That we concreted. And then the last thing is, uh, the miscellaneous. Um. Every year, we get involved with the Elementary Safety Day. Uh, the city of Halsey and Lynn Bitten Road Department, Randy was involved, and Billy was involved with, uh, setting up a little area for the safety day, um, they displayed some equipment and talked to the kids about importance of, uh, calling eight-one-one before you dig, and also construction area zones. And so that's kind of a good thing that we do for the community and, 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 uh, it's all fun. Um, the last thing is that we, annually, we, we're involved with helping with the city cleanup. And that's all I have for my report. Is there any questions? Hello?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any questions.
No.
I have to say the, um, the day at the school, it's always, I look forward to driving by it every year and seeing the kids out there all excited and everybody that's involved, so thank you for doing that.
You bet. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Andy.
Bye-bye.
Next on the agenda is the library report. Oh, yes, we can.
Okay. Um. So let's see. In June, we had a hundred and seven visitors at the library, which is an average of four point eight six patrons a day, which is pretty close to what it's been the past couple months, so it's been pretty consistent. And sixty-five books were put into circulation, which includes the last bit of the Battle of the Books order that, for some reason, was delayed. Um. And summer reading program had its first event last Saturday. And that went pretty well, everything is ready to go and kind of smooth sailing from here, I think. Um. After summer reading program is over, I'm gonna plan on having some small monthly events at the library. Um, and I think the Parks and Library Advisory Committee had some ideas for that, um. So, yeah, those will probably start in August or September. And let's see, JB Woodworks came and took measurements to build a new shelf for the library, so hopefully we'll find out more soon. And the big news really is that the library received a pledge for thirteen hundred dollars from Vericom. Um. So, yeah, that's kind of the most exciting thing. Um. And I think that's about it.
Alright, thank you, Abby.
About any of that?
No. I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you for planning all the events, I love that idea.
Of course.
Thank you, Abby.
Yep, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the council's, council priorities report. Hillary?
And I can't really believe it's been two years since I last won these.
I can't either.
Uh, so for the water system improvements, the engineering actually has already begun, the direct funding request made it into SB five-five-oh-six, we're waiting to see if we get it. Um, hopefully, it's signed by the governor, and then we will have essentially a pretty well, because two hundred thousand will be paid for by ARPA and the other three hundred thousand by the state of Oregon. And there's no match to that, it's not a loan, it's a grant, so fingers crossed, um, and then the building repairs and facility improvements. I did, I just didn't have the capacity, I paused research on the asset management maintenance tracker, I worked on it a little bit intermittently during the two years when I had time. There wasn't a really great solution, um, and so I've actually, uh, dumped that on Abby, and I'm gonna help her, or Amber, and I'm gonna help her so that she's not doing it so I, to me, this, I think there's some expensive stuff that larger cities have, to me, this is such an obvious piece of software.
I would think so.
So, but we, we just need to do a little bit more research, um, and we'll probably continue that whether or not council selects it as a, a goal for this coming cycle, uh, we did have conversations with Lynn County GIS, they will create an electronic map of our in-ground utilities for free for us. Um, so we will, that will be Amber working with, um, the maps we have and working with Andy, because a lot of this is in his head, and one of my goals is to get all this stuff out of Andy's head before he leaves us. And, um, then we send it, once we get all that information extracted, we'll put it on flat maps, send it to Steve and he'll map it for us.
Awesome.
Um. The wastewater treatments who are in INI projects, uh, the, the report was complete in twenty-two, September twenty-two. Uh, we received, we have received financing through DEQ for the whole project, um, it looks like it'll be fifty percent loan forgiveness for the INI work and a hundred percent for the wastewater facilities plan. But we're waiting for those loans in September. Um, the financial stewardship operation costs have continued to be impacted by inflation, um. The city revenue increased slightly due to the housing market staff, we continue to see efficiencies, um, where we can and, uh, opportunities to eliminate costs. The full-page billing was included in this, and that's implemented, and staff is working on setting up the e-billing portal. And the current goal is to have that live by August first, the vendor thinks that's possible. Having just gone through full-page billing, which we thought was gonna be easy, and took about three months to work out five months, work out all the bugs, I'm a little scared, but they think so, so we will again, cross our fingers, the rare program participant, Julia. Julie was such a huge value.
Huge.
And half of, half of her very small contribution from the city was paid with a, for, with a grant from Fort Family Foundation, we essentially paid about thirteen thousand dollars to have. We essentially paid about thirteen thousand dollars to have a full-time employee for eleven months. And she, she knocked it out of the park. She did. The Emergency Response Plan, which is on the agenda later tonight. She not only did the Master Parks Plan with the help of some very able people in this room. She also got the OPRD grant submitted, which I wasn't sure if we would hit that or not. And she just helped me do the presentation for that. She's just, and then she, she ended up picking up some extra work, some extra projects around the edges. And kept me sane through the whole DEQ environmental process, which is good, cause, cause that was, that was hard for me. So I, I mean, I just can't say enough about what a great experience this was for me personally, but also I think for Halsey, I think we got a lot of value for that. So. The Emergency Response Plan, it will be considered later in this meeting. The Parkmaster, the Halsey Park Program is, the Parkmaster Plan is completed, OPRD grant is submitted. What I have in here says we applied for a hundred and ten thousand dollars with a sixty thousand dollar match. They actually called us and said, drop your match, we can give you more money than that. So I think we changed it to like a thirty or forty thousand dollar match. And Julia will probably know and I think she's on, I think she's attending remotely. We made, we made a presentation to the committee there of works grants and we'll find out if we were successful in December. The vehicle replacements, the ditch mower was purchased last July. I haven't found a city who wants to share purchase of a man lift, but have some good leads on organizations that might be willing to let us use their equipment with an IGA. The first one being Lynn County. I've just had trouble getting. In touch with the right person. Improved street maintenance, the East B Street project will be completed this summer. We also will be doing some additional chip sale to preserve existing streets this summer. And as Andy said, we found some. You know, bad chunks of street in town and went through and proactively cut those and replaced them. In addition, Marissa is submitting a SCA grant. It's due at the end of the month. And it would, if granted, allow us to pave the gravel stretch on H Street. And then widen the two blocks on H and one block on I that are single lane wide. So we'll see if we get that this year. And then council leadership and community engagement. This, this was really inspiring for me. Several counselors joined local and regional community groups and boards. Their Thursdays have been happening for six months. Some of them more successful than others. You know, we can play with this. I think the mayor wanted to continue them for at least a full year. And then maybe, you know, you look at it and say, well, I don't think that worked very well. Let's try something else. But I think sometimes in Halsey, it's hard to get people to come out of their homes. But I mean, I got feedback from the people who did come that they really appreciated the events and that they appreciated. That opportunity. So I think the quality was there, even if it wasn't a lot of quantity sometimes. That's, that's council priorities report.
Everybody have any questions for Hillary?
If you know anything about the select's grant.
We haven't been notified yet and I don't have.
I can, I can speak to that. We should know by the end of this month if we got the grant.
Okay, cool.
Do we wanna? Yeah. Wanna go back up then? Have you give your report? Yes. It's okay, we'll forgive you if it's.
Traffic, we issued citations for folks driving without licenses or driving with suspended license. And stop signs. Again, kind of a common thing with. Two thousand twenty-three in Halsey, we didn't have any property crimes, which is a good thing. We did recover a phone vehicle. That vehicle was actually stolen a Corvallis and just left here. Also, when that happened, we said it'd spark it for, for auto model. So nothing occurred really in Halsey to, to really know. I mean, spent quite, quite a bit of time preparing and found cell phones with owner who actually lived in Oak Ridge. Working with other agencies to get ahold of that person in Oak Ridge and. Meeting halfway to give them their phone back. So. I feel like we, we don't really talk about a whole bunch of stuff compared to other cities in Halsey. So I brought. Spike strips with me and I don't know if you guys know what the, what, what they look like or how long they are, anything like that. With some of the stuff that's going on, law enforcement, we get a lot of the loops now, cause we're really not allowed to chase them. We chase them with our radios and we try to get deputies positioned in front of them to. Throw spike strips at them and that's happening quite often. So I brought those just to show you guys what it might look like. If you wanna do that today, I know you're missing a few, or if you wanna say that for another time or can do it again.
Well, you could do it and we can just tell the others they missed.
You're here, you've got it. Let's go for it.
So throwing spike strips are probably one of the most dangerous things we do. You can imagine somebody who's running, we're usually chasing people at speeds of a hundred miles an hour. We have to get really close to their tires to make these work. So it's, it's pretty dangerous. This is how they fold up. You can see the little rows. These are actually cap needles. And so when a tire goes over them, the, this little knob goes inside their tire and leaves a hole, a plug. With an entry and exit and it just slowly deflates their tires over time. So our goal is always to get four. If we were only to get two, you know, it'd probably take five minutes to deflate tires. And at that point, hopefully they stop. A lot of times you just go on the rims and you'll see smoke and flames and, and all sorts of stuff.
As they're driving, you take that, you have to try to throw it out in front of them or do you have it down?
Yeah, so there's. We do, is I would hold it like this and as they drive in front of me, then I would throw it. Right? If possible, like when we get into pursuits on I five, I will set this out somewhere. And then I will go stand behind a concrete barrier or something. And then as they come, I will slowly pull it so they can't see it. All this, maybe they see this cord in the road. But I don't want them to see the spike strips and as they come last minute, I will yank it, yank it in front.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, cool. So that's how.
I thought it stayed in like.
Is that one lane?
We can cover it late and a half with it. So. It just depends on how fast you're going. A lot of times they swerve at the last minute. So we'll get maybe one side of the tires. But fully, fully extended, we can reach pretty damn far. And I left one needle. Uncapped, it gives you just how sharp they are.
So you do one and then if, are there other guys down farther or whatever or?
Yeah, so I just use I five as an example. So if we have a pursuit in Harrisburg. We'll get deputies set up at the Halsey exit. Halsey Brownsville and then Highway thirty-four and then Highway twenty. And so depending on which exit they can get off on, we'll kind of have everything covered. Yeah. But this is how sharp those needles are. That puncture into their tires. So like a nail.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just hollow, so it lets air.
So drive over it and the. Cap them in?
Yep, and it doesn't come out. And so it just leaves kind of a hollow tube. Yeah. It's this one right here. So, yeah, like I said, it's, I don't, well, I do kind of enjoy throwing these in front of cars. But at the same time, you're a lot of flash for your eyes. When you get a truck doing a hundred and ten miles an hour, you have to be, you know, this close.
Right.
So.
And hope they don't see you and.
Right, pretty, pretty dangerous, but if we can get them in front of a car, it's really, really effective. Yeah. So, yeah, maybe I'll do some more, hopefully try and do some more show and tell. I just feel like.
That'd be awesome.
There's not a lot of notable stuff that happens in Halsey. There's not a lot of things you guys can really question me about, or they do question me about.
Well, it's kind of nice that way though.
It is very nice, yeah. But if you were to go to other city council meetings, there's a lot of. Issues and newsworthy type stuff and issues that need to be addressed and, and Halsey. Really, for the most part, just kind of manages itself, you know, and. It's a really tight community with people kind of born and raised here and. They kind of solve their own issues or if something looks suspicious, they'll just call us right away. Because they know their neighbors, right? And so we just don't really have a lot of riffraff that comes through town. Yeah. Any questions about anything?
Or how often do you have to grow them?
It could be three times a day or sometimes it will go a month or two. Yeah, it just depends. Yeah. Well, we'll try to help other agencies, State Police, chase people from the north of us and south of us and then get off the exits, you know. We'll assist Albany, Lebanon, Sweet Home, Corvallis, Benton County, Marion County. And there's a lot of agencies around us that. Their issues fill in the ours and we try to stop it.
No, I'll help each other.
Yep. Yep, those are, those are spike, what spike strips look like.
Totally different than what I thought. I was seeking like. A role of something in.
I was thinking those things that like are in parking lots, right? Even like backing up is.
Yeah, those are a type of stopstick, actually. In my opinion, just not quite as effective and they don't have as long of a reach. This works kind of like an accordion where with those usually it has three long arms and it's really hard to control those three arms. And have them coordinate with each other. You get them to bend and they, they twist up on you and stuff like that. You have them just right. But here, there's so many needles on this thing. If I can just get a couple in it in one tire. That tire will slowly deflate and go to a ramp and you just cannot drive on three tires. So they're, they're effective. But all, all our control part did happen.
I had one question about something in the report.
Yeah.
Says driving without privilege.
Yes.
What is, I mean, it usually it says without license or insurance, but it says without privilege.
The deputy just worded it a little different. So that's somebody that is eligible for driver's license. They don't have one. So it's just simply driving without a driver's license, but that's this. That's the state statute of what they would be cited for. So they're not being issued a citation for driving while suspended or revoked. They're being issued a citation for driving without, without privileges. They just haven't went through the DMV process to get a license.
Sixty-two.
That could have been that. Older folks will let it expire or family won't let them renew it.
Right.
And so then you lose your privileges if you don't renew it. So.
Okay, I just never seen it, it worded that way. So.
Yeah, yeah. I don't change a lot of what the deputies say on the report. I go through and match everything up. But yeah, that's just a case of the issue of citation of someone driving who didn't have a driver's license. That's the title of the statute.
Yeah, okay.
Question about anything else?
I think we're good.
You guys want to see anything else you must see?
I'd like to submit a citizen academy thing.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
Now, feel free, I mean, anything you take to other cities, even if it doesn't pertain here. I don't know. It's kind of cool to see.
Yeah, I know. I'm in a position right now where I'm extremely busy. So I don't have a lot of time to kind of pre-plan some stuff like this.
You know what's going on? What's going on?
I'm doing a lot of field training with newer deputies. And so once we can get some more guys on the road, I'm hoping to go more. Back to more of a position of one-on-one contact with the cities and kind of spend a day in a different city. Instead of training cops, how to be cops and just try to get to know areas a little better. You know, stick in Halsey for twelve hours and then the next day go to Harrisburg for twelve hours. Next day go to Little City for twelve hours. And right now I kind of visit every city every day, depending on call load. So I know all the cities. I just don't know all the cities really well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is sharing hands.
Of the May report for sharing hands, then just numbers continue to go up. We're now serving a hundred and ninety-eight families and eight hundred and twenty individuals. So previous report was like seven hundred and ninety individuals. Families. So the cost of food continues to go up. You know, the federal money went up, that extra federal money went away. On food programs. So. Assistance. So people are depending on food bank. And. So far, we're managing, we've had a few people step up. Help bridge the gap. The, the big news that we have is I can finally announce that we are getting ready to add on to the existing building that we have in Brownsville. We own that building outright and. Are currently renting the doctor's office. And doctor's been great, given us a very fair rent, but she'd like to sell the property. At some point. And. So we, we've said that we will try to move somewhere around April. So that she can put it on the market to the, the good marketing time. To do that, we need to have space and so. We've been through some of the preliminary work with the city, drawn up preliminary plans, the engineers finalizing plans now. And our trust engineering should, should actually be getting done today or tomorrow. So we should have plans in a few days to submit to the city and county. For fourteen hundred square foot addition to the back and sides of the existing building.
Wow.
That, what that will give us is. Basically a warehouse space and a handicapped bathroom and an office for the director. But mostly warehouse space. So we'll shell it out. For the food. Eventually we'll put walk-ins in there, but we have a lot of fairly new refrigeration, which by the way, the city has been very generous and donated on. Some of that. So for now, we would be moving that refrigeration over, but our anticipation is break ground in September. With a hope to get a roof over it before the rains get too bad.
Are you talking about like the, the shop damage?
You know where the. You know, the.
I mean, I know where the.
Store is, the, the Cherry Hands has on the main. Grab going.
Right.
Two twenty-eight. The back of that building. And it comes in, it'll come in on the sides a little bit. So it'll extend eight feet beyond the building on the east side. And. I gotta remember, it's, it's about thirty feet from the building back towards the west side. It's total of seventy-two feet. And with twenty-four feet in depth, we're adding. But then you cut out for what exists that cuts in. So anyway, it works out fourteen hundred square feet that we're adding to.
That's awesome.
Which we calculated out what we're using at the doctor's office, what's actually usable. And that should serve us with a little bit of growth room. Plus we'll have ten-foot ceilings, which gives us stability to go a little higher with things. And it'll be a better layout. It'll have a roll-up door for. Bringing our. Items in. Right now, they've got to drop it off out at the street and roll them all the way around into the building. And on the rainy days, which I've helped on, there's no fun. And they'll be able to actually pull right up to the door and offload into the building. That'll be really nice.
Junction City Local Aids kind of like that. Where they've got the big building and they'll roll up and you can drive in and shelving on the inside and everything.
So now we're gonna come to the community and ask that they consider. Donating towards the project and donating time because we would like to do it with mostly volunteers. Like we did City Hall here, like we did the library. Like we did city hall here, like we did the library. I know we have people in this community that are willing to do that sort of thing. Um, we've had some significant commitments, financial commitments already, but we've got a ways to go. So. Yes.
Um, I can include that in our August newsletter, the call to help. For all of that, and I can kind of familiar you with a little excerpt before I put it in the newsletter and have you review it.
Appreciate that. Yeah, because I just got permission two days ago to put it out in public. I've known about it, but because I've been drawing the plans and doing the research for six months.
Little tease at one point.
Yeah.
So.
But.
Yeah.
But I did not have permission from the board until just the other day to to finally make it public, that uh, that we are. Finally gonna be able to do this. The goal is, we do have. We could get a loan. The goal is. To do this with donations and volunteers. We own the property, the existing building, if we can do the addition and not go into debt. I believe it's around fourteen hundred dollars a month between rent, the extra utilities and and everything. Yeah, internet and all that that's involved in having two locations. We get it back to one location, so I think it's around fourteen hundred dollars a month that we'll save. Well, it keeps costing us more and more for food.
Mm-hmm.
That's that much more that we can put into being able to feed people, and we don't just feed people. We had a family that had a house burned down. This last month. So we provide food and household items that they needed and clothes, things like that. Sharing Hands is there to serve this community. They don't serve anywhere else, they serve here. This.
Halsey Brownsville.
Yeah, the the central Lynn community is who they serve. And, um, I believe, believed all along that this community is gonna support them. And. Be able to put this building up without having a debt.
Hmm, that would be awesome.
If you haven't already spoken with, um, fire chief Travis, he helped a lot on the library building. He kind of picked up when you had to step away, and. He often steps forward for things like this, I suspect he would want.
Yeah, and like I said, I hope to break ground in September, which means. Somewhere around the end of September, we will be putting up walls and such, and that's when I'm really gonna have a call out for. People to step up. I do have a contractor that is willing to provide his manpower for a partial day to stand walls. So that I can have enough people on the job to not have to have wall jacks or anything to actually literally just stand walls. And in a couple hours, have a structure standing there.
Very exciting.
So, yeah, it is very exciting. I've been working on this for quite a while.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. That's exciting. Um, next up is the Central One School District. Council President. Yeah, that's me. Um, actually, they don't have a, um, school board meeting in the month of July, so I don't have anything.
They're building the playground, I see.
Yes.
My daughter washed the thing, eat the playground structure when we were driving by, she thought it was great.
Oh, yeah. Fine, I mean, I know that there's a lot going on, just. As soon as on the school board, they do have a lot going on right now, but I just don't have any specific report, so. Then we have. Have the Oregon Passageways West Council of Governments. And that is very, but it's not sure. Ordinants and resolutions. We have council's permission to read the ordinance and resolution by title only.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please. Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four four six, and ordinance amending the Halsey municipal code. Six point one five traffic.
So this is a companion ordinance to the, uh, camping ordinance that you worked on last month. Um, and essentially, there used to be a little bit of language in our traffic ordinance about RVs. Um, traffic on the right way for days. We moved that into the camping ordinance so that everything that had to do with that would be in one place, so it's just basically remove that language from the ordinance.
But you have any questions? All right, everyone create a motion.
Move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopted ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four four six. An ordinance amending the Halsey municipal code. Six point one five traffic.
Second. As a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Looking various. Next, we will go to resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash seven two six, a resolution by the city of Halsey adopting the Halsey emergency response plan.
So this is, um, I've almost said Julia's last project for us, which is actually working on a common chapter two, so. Uh, and she's with us tonight, and since she did. Pretty much all the work on this, I thought I'd let her talk to you about it, and certainly she would be the one to answer questions. Um, but it is included in your packet, and if it's in a physical state, or could be adopted with amendments, you can adopt it tonight, and if you see major problems and want to. In the back way and bring it back again.
Absolutely, but Julia, you wanna talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, so, um. Hillary and I looked at multiple other small towns. We looked at the city of Sio, we looked at, um. Uh, what was the other one? Um, it's there.
But, uh, banks, do we have banks in there?
Yes, yes, banks too. So we were looking at other small towns. I collaborated with the mayor who has a background in. Um, emergency response. I talked with Travis about this. Um, I also reached out to the. Lynn County Sheriff's Office and their emergency response manager, Rick Lince. Um, so this was a, this is a big collaborative project, and it's just supposed to be. As simple as possible without missing anything for what city council and city staff, um. Should be responsible for in the event of an emergency.
Very thorough.
Yeah, I gotta admit, I only got partway through it. That's a lot of reading.
It is, and I know that she, um, streamlined it a lot. To to try to make it, and we started working with Lebanon, which is much more complicated, what I. My goal was really a document that could be in my hands when something bad happens, because I'm not gonna have it memorized. And I can flip to the right place and all the information is there, and so that's, this is meant to be a really useful tool rather than an abstract. Theoretical document. Uh, it's got phone numbers in it, it's got, um, contacts in it, it's. It's meant to be a useful tool.
Oh, I appreciate it, that it's plenty worth at the beginning.
There are some things in there that we aren't doing yet, is, um, both in terms of like trainings that we want to do for city staff. Um, and more outreach to the community to help households prepare themselves. Uh, because realistically, the city is not going to have food for every human being in Halsey for two weeks. Um, you know, we will do our very best to store what we can, but. We've got to help ourselves, it's, you know, this and this, you know, we've got to help ourselves too. So, I mean, there's things in that plan that aren't realized yet, but I think.
Anybody have any questions or anything?
No, the only question that I noticed, I was looking through part of it, um, on page fifty-nine. It talks as the librarian having like a specific job during an emergency. On that one, would it be something that we would want to have like a backup to that potentially, because none of our librarians ever have lived in Halsey? Like if something happens right now, Abby lives like out in Thurston, so if there's something that goes on, we don't even know if we can actually contact, like if we can get in contact with her.
Yeah, and I, somewhere in here, a few times it says, nothing in here is meant to prevent. The people on the ground making the decisions they have to make. Truthfully, if something bad happens. I could be a number, I mean, I don't go to number, but.
You're on a kayak in the middle of the lake.
I don't know, but I mean, we'll work with who's here, and and, um, I think what we could do is make that less specific, so it doesn't say librarian.
Yeah, she just had a very specific role on that one than it looked like, so I, since. The librarian, I don't even know, and the last librarian lived in Halsey that was in Halsey.
Tea.
Oh.
Um, and she. I think, resident in two thousand eighteen. Um, so. Yes, it's a good point to make it either less specific or, um, provide a backup, and I think probably less specific will identify the role and. Role could be assigned. It might be you. Essentially, we're looking to have somebody who works with. Volunteers and also helps with communication. Um. So, we're, I think maybe if it's okay, my plan would be to just strike that word librarian and create. Volunteer volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I also wrote this before, we also expanded our staff at city hall too, so we have. We have expanded capacity, um. Since I finished writing this as well, so we're more than welcome to be flexible about this.
You guys see that as a. Option or a.
Yeah, no, that sounds good.
It could be done as an amendment, um, what I would. Propose as substituting or the volunteer coordinator for librarian. That's okay.
Is there any kind of existing emergency plan? For the time being?
Sort of. There's a very old one that was done off a model from our insurance company, and it's a lot less specific. Essentially a chapter in our safety manual, so we did have one, um, but it's. This. Has two ma- well, a couple of major strengths over that. One is that Julia went through that process of engaging with different organizations. Um, and two is it's just so much more specific, um, in terms of the agreements we already have in place, in terms of the resource. We have, um, and this is. A bit smaller than that one, that was pretty abstract. And it's also ten years old.
Hmm.
Well, this one's pretty thorough.
Yeah, pretty.
But like you said, three million, too.
I I looked at best for Julia, she has written this. Three times.
Sorry, Julia.
But thank you.
Well, do we want to, with that change, go ahead and adopt it tonight, or do you guys? You okay with that?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
And.
Um. Fine, it's a fairly simple one.
Yeah.
We have about four times this in the hospital.
Oh, all right, I would entertain a motion then.
We just need to add like the verbal amendments.
I moved, we adopted a resolution and got it estimated.
I move that the governing body of the city of Hall, the adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash seven two six. A resolution of by the city of Halsey adopting the Halsey emergency response plan as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. We will adjourn the meeting at eight oh five.